...of our local ecology. In protecting these headwaters for generations to come, we look into the future responsibly, knowing that this asset will be even more precious to our city's well-being. This has taken a long time, efforts from the community, staff, and council. We are very appreciative of the partnership with the Noble family and their efforts to preserve this important land in honor of the memory of their beloved son Aaron. Like the rivers to ridges trails, this land is preserved for all of those who live here or visit. It is a community asset and should be recognized as such whether you live north, south, east, or west. This land is for you to enjoy and benefit from its preservation. Like our air and water, this land is part of the health of our city and for generations to come. Yes, Councilor Pryor?
Thank you. Just quickly, I also will support it. This item has been actually on our plate for many, many, many years, long before some of us were here. And I'm glad to see that we finally reached closure on this particular piece of property. And I'm particularly pleased that we've reached closure not only at a price we can afford from a source that's appropriate, but it also, as the mayor and others have pointed out, represents a partnership opportunity, which I'm particularly pleased with, that we are not only stepping up, but we also have neighbors and other people in that area who care greatly about this property and are willing to be partners on it. So I think it reflects the best outcome we could have had for this piece of property. And so from that standpoint, it's easy for me to say, yeah, I will support this motion.
Thank you. Yes, I want to concur with the comments that were made before me. This issue has been here a lot longer than I've served on this council. And recently, I was discouraged that we would not find a way forward. And so I really want to thank Councilor Taylor for her tireless advocacy on behalf of this effort. And also thank the folks involved with the B. Noble Foundation, because I do believe that having this partnership is a very important aspect to this project and will enhance its value over the long term in terms of added value to the landscape and the understanding of its importance in terms of not just our ecosystem, but also our enjoyment of our natural areas.
Yeah, I think this is a very good addition to our parklands. It creates both sides of the canyon going up the Amazon headwaters for our enjoyment for the generations to come, and also that habitat that's there. Some of it not so great, some of it really nice. I think it's a very good use of the park fund monies that we have remaining in keeping with the intent that we had when voters voted on that. It is a very long time in coming. I remember working on this when I first got in council, so it's almost, it's actually probably predated me. And special thanks to Councilor Taylor for her steadfastness and moviness, always keeping our eye on the ball and moving forward. But a really big thank you to the Nobles for stepping up and being good community partners and stewards of the land. And I think it does very much honor Aaron's memory.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I too want to thank and congratulate the Nobles and Councilor Taylor for sticking with this through the thick and thin. It looked like it was going to go away sometimes. And the dedicated people made sure that that didn't happen. And it's a really great addition to what we already have. And I will, of course, certainly support the motion. Thanks.
We'll vote on it, and then you'll get your chances. All right. So all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, and none in opposition. It passes. With thanks to everyone out there. Betty?
Okay. I can hardly speak now. Very emotional about this. Thanks to everyone. This is a great victory for water quality, for air quality, for wildlife, wildlife corridor, for the residents of the city, and for the teachers who have used it for an outdoor classroom. And I think we owe a lot of gratitude to Southeast neighbors. And especially, I hate to mention names because there's so many people who worked on this, but Deborah Noble never gave up from the very beginning and has done a great deal. Also, Peter Noble. Kevin Matthews, who's been persistent. And also to the inspiration of Erin Noble, who was ready to work on this acquisition. And I think that future residents will be grateful to us for saving it. Thank you.
All right. Well, well done, everybody. Thank you so much. Yes.
One other thank. Thank you to the staff for negotiating this deal, I think, and keeping within the confines that we, and the constraints that we gave to you guys. It was a very amicable job. Thank you.
All right. It's hard. I know. It feels like such a little moment. Now we have to have to so much big time. Anyway, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on and move on to the next part of our agenda. Thank you all for being here for this moment. Next up is the Eugene Public Library of the Future.
Thanks for today. Connie and I are going to come on up and do that.
I know.
Yeah, right. Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Yes. More positive conversation, I hope, tonight. I'm Renee Grooby, Director of the Library Recreation Cultural Services Department. And if you recall, back in May, or actually maybe June, we had asked you to consider putting together a committee to go and explore options for a potential library levy. At that time, we decided not to do that, but committed to coming back to you with information about what some of those options might be into the future, just for consideration and more information. So since that time, we thought, really, what we need to do is make sure that we know what the community wants as the library of the future for Eugene. And so what you'll see before you aren't options for potential funding, but just a status of where we are, where we've been a little bit, and some of the challenges moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Connie Bennett, our Library Services Director.
Welcome, Connie.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and councilors, for the opportunity to talk about the vision for the Eugene Public Library of the Future. This evening, I'll share the vision, the library's current status, and review some of the challenges to serving the community's needs around library services. So where this came from. Last month, in the most recent of our, is this right? Is that how it's supposed to sound?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow. You guys have to deal with this all the time.
Nice.
Okay.
How do we get a nicer city?
Oh, okay.
The microphone of the future.
In the future.
Okay, okay. We're talking about future of lots of Eugene tonight. So last month, in our most recent conversation with the community, we engaged with hundreds of citizens about their vision of the EPL of the future. They described a vibrant, busy, beautiful, and well-organized physical space, safe, accessible, and welcoming to all Eugenians, regardless of age, ability, or socioeconomic status. And they also described an energetic interconnected space where all community members had access to the skills and the resources needed to actively and safely participate in a world's increasingly digital future.
Connie, just trying to interrupt you for a second. Just push it a tad away from me.
Tad away from me. Okay, we'll get this.
It'll be a little.
Is that better? Oh, it's better for me. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the vision that you saw in your AIS report aligns very well with national studies about futures of what libraries can do for their communities. It also aligns well with what Eugene has imagined for its own future and the way that libraries can support us going that direction. So what are these goals that community members identified? First of all, that 100% of Eugene kids would be ready to learn at the point that they entered kindergarten. Secondly, that all Eugene children would be reading at grade level by third grade. That Eugene teens would have a fun, unique, and inviting space to explore, learn, create. That all ages of Eugenians would have access to credible, unbiased information, be able to support, have support with contextual and evaluative analysis, skills to personally and as a member of society participate in learning, in democratic process, and access materials in all formats. They also envisioned a Eugene Public Library that supported small businesses, supported job seekers. For example, just last week, a staff member was telling me about helping upload, helping someone upload for the first time, a job resume to a digital application. And e-government things such as filing taxes, applying for Access Oregon, all kinds of interactive things as the world changes around us. They also saw Eugene having digital inclusion as forefront, so that regardless of where a Eugenian was, they had access to the Eugene Public Library resources across all kinds of platforms. So the 24/7 virtual branch that offers premium research tools, downloadable digital materials such as ebooks, e-magazines, videos, music, and 24/7 support from staff through the Ask a Librarian chat. All of these things are, many of these things are available now, but not to the level that the Eugenians of the future that we need for our future. So moving next to how Eugenians perceive our library right now. They actually love it. You probably already knew this. Last year, we did a survey and found 93% of Eugenians thought of the library positively. Less than 1.5% thought negatively. There were a few neutrals, but overwhelmingly, it's supported. And we also have a great group of supporters through the Friends of the Library, the Library Foundation, hordes of volunteers. Many people have indicated that they are very supportive of these services. So Eugene Public Library has also, just three weeks ago, been recognized for the fifth time as a Star Library. The Library Journal does a national survey of libraries and recognizes the top 3% in the nation for efficiency of delivery of services. This is based on a comparison of the libraries in comparable budget sizes, that of how cost-effectively they deliver services per capita in four key areas. And ours are based on the visits. We have over 3,500 visitors a day. Circulation, nearly 3 million checkouts per year. Program attendance, almost 50,000 people attended free programs at the library. And internet and computer use, and this is not Wi-Fi use. This is hardwired public PCs. So what's wrong? There is a service gap. We are starting to fall behind. The numbers that we were awarded our fifth Star Library came from fiscal year 2012. That was the last year that both branches were open, 56 hours a week. It was before the reduction that happened this year to downtown's hours. You can see here our, the library's budget since fiscal year 20,000, the three, four-year levies that are outlined in your AIS, and the increase of services. I'll just point out a couple points of history that help explain this. The numbers, the dollar figures, this top line is 12 million. This is 10 million. The dollar figures are not adjusted for inflation, so this is actual dollars. In 20,000, Eugene Public Library was served by the main downtown library on 13th Street and a bookmobile. In 2001, the two branches opened. Partway through 2003, January 26th, 2002, in fact, I happen to remember, the downtown library opened. And halfway through FY '05, that is to say, January of, excuse me, '04, January of 2004, was when we maximized our hours to the most that they were, 64 hours a week downtown, 56 hours at both branches. As you know, under the budget pressures that the library has faced in recent years, our budget has declined since FY '10. And in that time, about $2 million has been cut from the library's budget. It is putting us behind what Eugenians are expecting from library service. And this next chart shows that. The line that you see across the graph is the population of Eugene. You can see gradually growing. This is the circulation of library materials of all kinds. And you can see that it was keeping a pace with Eugene until our budget cuts started about FY '10. Each color represents a different location. The dark blue at the bottom is the downtown library. With the gap in, with reduction in hours, it impacted access to the branches in a way that flattened our circulation. It also, in FY '10, we had a significant reduction to our collection budget, so the quality of the collection has started deteriorating. The little thin line right here of turquoise is virtual circulation, ebooks, downloads, things like that. You can see it's hardly anything on, in the overall picture, but that's the fastest-growing part of our circulation, over 35% a year the past few years. So we face some significant challenges. And the challenges are, whoops, hit the wrong button there, about every child being ready to learn. Right now, actually, in the latest available numbers, 54% of kids in Eugene were not ready to learn at the time they entered kindergarten. And the number is even greater in the promised neighborhoods such as our Bethel branch. There, 81% of kids were not ready to read, learn to read as they entered kindergarten. And also the projection of, in the Bethel area, 43% of kids were projected not to be on grade level by third grade, which is the most significant indicator, I think you've heard before, of success, graduation from high school, future success in life. We also have space challenges. These free, wonderful cultural and educational events that we provide at the library, especially the large-scale ones, are very well-attended, and they're a great gift to the community, but they take all day long for our dedicated staff to set them up, set up, and take down. And so we know that if we had a more efficient space available for this kind of program, we could provide it much more effectively, cost-effectively. We also have challenge for space for teen services. Teens, the teen space in the downtown library is too small for the community that we have. You probably saw the letter in this morning's paper from a teenager asking for more services available for kids of that age. They deserve an engaging self and welcoming, safe and welcoming space of their own. And we anticipate both of these needs, the programming space needs and the teen space needs, could be met when we expand to the fourth floor of the downtown library building. Another challenge is neighborhood access. With only two neighborhood branches, there are many neighborhoods that are underserved. And even those branches that we have don't have enough hours open. And so that creates a hardship for the community members, and that's the word that they use when they talk to us. The limited hours is a hardship. It no longer fits in my schedule. I have to come downtown. I have to ride the bus. The book drop is closed, whatever. The hours of access at the branches were reduced from 54 per week at each branch to 26 per week at each branch two years ago. And that was reduced from six days to five days. One of the biggest ways that that's also impacted, another of our challenges, which is meeting technology needs, because each of those hours that the building is closed is another hour that all those computers are not available to the people that would like to use them. And we have, every computer is in use from the time we open to the time we close. We are not able to, even before reduction of hours, we were not able to meet the demand for computer access. We're also not keeping up with broadband speed. Partly, it's accessibility out in the outer regions, but it's also one of the things our community is considering investing in, and that's important to access to information for library services. One of the things that was really interesting when we did the conversations about the Library of the Future, when we were out at the branches, we were constantly interrupted by people trying to come in and use the branch. And we'd say, oh, are you here for the conversation? No, I just wanted to use the library. I'm sorry, we're not open. But we also saw parked in the parking lot around, at each branch, people sitting in their cars, using their devices to access the free Wi-Fi from the branch. So that's another huge service provision area. One of the ways that I think we'll be able to succeed in meeting some of these needs in the future is through partnership opportunities. Eugene Public Library, as I mentioned, has three physical locations, downtown and the two branches. But we have outreach into the community above and beyond that. We have a number of what we call deposit collections throughout the community. And these are collections of several hundred books per location that are checked out to another institution and then made available to that institution for their constituency to use. And the people that mostly are taking advantage of that with us are Spanish-speaking children and seniors in senior residencies. Those are the main areas. But there's certainly an opportunity for a lot more of this. Another thing that we're doing with partnership is addressing that early literacy gap through a program called Storytime to Go. That sends a library volunteer out to each one of these Storytime to Go sites once a week, where they're, get a storytime and practice in early literacy skills. And the Storytime to Go locations are also, we're beginning to get deposit collections at all of those, including the ones that if we, we don't have quite the capacity to meet all the locations we've had requests for, so at least we can get deposit collections to the ones we don't have volunteers for. Our newest partnership, you probably have heard of, is the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. The library launched this in collaboration with the Dollywood Foundation and the Eugene Public Library Foundation this September. And we have, as of today, 1,920 Eugene kids have signed up for this program. What happens is they get, once they're signed up, they get a free book in the mail addressed to them every month from the point of signing up, which can be as early as birth, until their fifth birthday. And this has the potential of getting each child a library of 60 books. And it's key to get that access to books, which gives them the opportunity to practice the reading, which gives them the skills to succeed and so forth. It's a tremendous gift that the foundation has committed to give to our community. And I should tell you that 1,920 kids is about where the Dollywood Foundation projected our community would be in three years instead of in three months. So it's hugely ambitious and wonderful project. A future partnership that we've also are engaged in is investing in a maker space for, primarily for teens, but really for all ages. This is a new kind of service that many public libraries across the nation are finding a lot of success with. It's an opportunity not unlike the sewing bees or barn raisings of old, where people come together and actually create something. But there's an actual digital twist to it, where you learn new skills such as the digital programming of movies or music, building, robots, programming, things like that. We're partnering with a vibrant maker community that's already developing in Eugene, but also University of Oregon and OSU both have researchers that are assisting us in our planning. And Lane Community College just recently hosted a programming workshop, I think it's Digital Dojo. So we're linking with a lot of people for creating the same kind of future collaborative learning lab in our, in Eugene Public Library. We'll have a small space, but once we expand into the fourth floor, that's another thing that that will bring more space for. So in conclusion, Eugene Public Library is really positioned well for creating, helping create the Eugene of our future, a shared vision for the community and what the library can do for it. It's a worthwhile investment of your time and funds. And I would, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about it a little bit, to share what community members told us, and also would be happy to, Renee and I would be happy to field any questions you might have.
Very much. Did you have a conversation with any, in any of these conversations about what type of funding people would be willing to engage in for the library? Was that part of your conversation at all? No?
Not in this round. Not in this, the one we did in October, no.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got some, a couple questions. Thanks for the presentation, by the way. It looks like the library is about ready to start using the fourth floor. Seems like you're running out of space for the teen, you know, larger gatherings and then larger events. And of course, you can't do that till we find a space for IT and central services to go to and a new city hall or some other place. We're not paying rent there. We'd have to pay rent somewhere else if we were to do that immediately. So that's not feasible, probably. But, and that was the original, I recall that was the original plan for the library, is take three floors and save the fourth for future expansion. So it looks like that time, we're there, as far as the need goes. And I just had a question about the ebooks. That's very interesting. You said they're growing by 35% a year. How's that work?
How do you?
How do you access them? I'm kind of a chocolateite with some of my friends.
Well, I have some fabulous staff that would love to show you.
I won't take time, but I'll just go down there.
But just briefly, you go to the library's webpage, and up at the top, you'll see something that says Books, Music, More. You click on there, and it will walk you through not only how to download something, but also if you're at the point of trying to decide what kind of device to buy, it helps you do a comparison of.
I see.
It's also the subject of a lot of classes that our staff provide about, you know, once you've bought a device, how to use it, how to download materials to it. The Zineo, for example, is an amazing magazine source that gives you full, beyond what you get in the printed page, because there's the interconnectivity with the web behind it to expand stories.
Oh, yeah. That'd be really useful.
I'd love to show it to you.
So you have to buy the device, and then what about the downloads of the material from, you access the library for that, too?
That's correct.
Is there a charge for that also?
Not to, not to borrow it from the library, no. You can certainly purchase things on your own, just like you can purchase books from a bookstore.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Thanks very much.
Chris?
Thank you. I was thinking, can you?
I was thinking, can you go back to the slide that showed the operating budget, the, the general fund and the use of the levy in the past? Because that was very meaningful to me in showing how we have added a lot of additional library capacity, particularly since 2003, 2004. And a lot of the ability to finance that capacity was through the use of the levy.
That's correct.
And we, through council decision, decided to absorb that levy into the general fund. I, I, we had promised we would do it, but we kind of did it earlier than we'd originally projected, so we had to take that hit pretty early and all at once. So you're looking at 2012, 2013, 2014, where there is no levy, and we're still having that high capacity, which is, which is what led us to our budget discussion that we just got done with. Seeing Chelsea in the audience reminded me, when we got to the final point, we were able to find ongoing money to pay for at least partial operation of the downtown branch. And we were able to find money to continue ongoing operation of Sheldon branch, or with the Bethel branch.
Bethel branch.
But we couldn't find money, because of how much there is, to, to pay for ongoing operations at the Sheldon branch, and so we had to put one-time money into it, which for me created an enormous pressure for us to figure out how to take care of those bars in an ongoing way. This is, this can't be a one-time money conversation year after year. We've really got to think in terms of stability. And we made a lot of progress in that direction in the last budget, but there's still some outstanding elements. So I guess the first question I would have, and I know this is conjecture at this point, but do we know going into this budget cycle whether we're going to be somewhat in parity, or are we thinking that we may be in a difficult position with this budget we're going into?
What we hope is that we'll be in a better position, and as we're continuing to work through all of those, we will come to the council. We're anticipating during your workshop in January is actually sort of rolling out, the forecast is we know it at that point, and that'll be able to talk about much clearer where we are from a budget perspective. So we're hoping that we're in a better position and we'll kind of, in January, talk about that.
We'll probably know a lot more then. I guess what I'm getting at is, we increased our library need and capacity at the same time when budgets were beginning to take a dramatic hit. And so it was kind of like, the need increased, the resources decreased. So even though we had to absorb the operating levy, that wasn't the, the structural issue for us, it was that our revenues weren't keeping up with the increased operation to manage a new library building, two branches, and to do it in an adequate and sustainable way. So that forces me, and this was really getting back to the conversation, the question that the mayor was asking, is what do we need to do to create that stability with this increased capacity and the reality of our budget? And what I would be interested in doing is having a conversation that looks beyond what we could just do with our general fund, and say, what are those things we could do that might involve, just as in the previous conversation, some sort of a partnership or, or even a levy, which served us so well for so many years? I'd be really interested in talking about how those might become part of that conversation.
I will say that we have been working on our partnerships, and one conversation that we've had in the last year is really what our partnership with the school districts could be around providing branch library services, especially as they move forward with some of their new buildings. We've had the conversations with the Y, and in that development does include a branch library that would be more cost-effective for us to try to serve. So there are things like that that will help us, you know, address some of those through partnerships.
So what, the interesting, first of all, I just want to say, and I think I can easily say I speak on the part of all of us about how proud we are of our library, just like the people you talked to express such pride and, and how much it's loved, and, and the national recognition is demonstrated of all that you succeed with. The thing that I'm struck with, honestly, is people have in recent years been asking about what the future is of libraries, and I think you pretty well demonstrated that given the ability to do it, you, you, you can figure out the direction of the future for libraries and the things that they can do that fit with people's lives today and their lives in the future. And for me, when I think about all the things we're trying to do as a city, there's an aspect of all of that that fits with the work of the library, from economic development to every, every, every part of what we're trying to do. So it seems to me that the conversation you've just had is over what do you value? What do you care about? That kind of conversation. Before we're into the how much conversation, it seems like there's another conversation about what is it that we, if we had the means, we could offer, which is not only about putting back things we've lost, but it's about how we use our libraries to carve out a future for our city, and then we can see it, and that we can talk to people in all parts of our community about what that can mean to them. This thing that you had in here about teens and what you could really do for teens if you had the space and the ability to do that, I think that's an important conversation to have with the community. So I would really advocate in some way for us to think about a kind of a forum where we're not asking questions as much as talking about what the possibilities are, so that people, before we get to the conversation about what do you want to pay for, it's really a conversation about, here's all the things that are, here's the possibilities that are out here that we could have if we were willing to take that step into the future, and here's what that means to our city. This is what it means to our kids, and this is what it means in terms of employment, and all those things that we care about. So there's a kind of robust conversation of connecting the dots that I think we could really, if we can find time to do that. I think that would be very educational for the city as a whole, and would kind of light a fire in what the possibilities are for not just doing a good job of what we know as traditional library, but really how we use all these assets that are available to really have our community step out into the future for all ages. I think that'd be a really great conversation for the community.
Hey, Mayor, I, we agree with that, and I, and I think as you move into that workshop in January, that might be a nice opportunity, at least for the elected officials, to really have some of those conversations about the future, not just with libraries, but you've been talking about parks, we've been talking about recreation, we've been talking about a lot of these topics. And so I think it's a, it could be a nice opportunity for this body to think about, where are we headed into the future, not just are we trying to recreate the past? And I think that's part of what you're getting at. So that might be one opportunity.
Or just putting our fingers in the dike. I think it's a very different conversation, and one, I, I think the community needs to be able to see where you're going as opposed to what you're worried about losing. It's a very different, very different conversation.
Patty, I've got you in the queue, and then Claire.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear you're talking about cooperating with the schools. There, there are middle schools all over town in space that's not used all the time, which makes a lot of sense. I'm also, I, I think the teen, I noticed a letter from a teen about teen activities, too, but I think that was about more than books. But I wonder if, I've thought for many years, I still think, we should have a teen center downtown, a young, a youth center. And I wonder if you think that could be, part of that could be a downtown branch library, especially for teenagers, if we ever get one, if we ever get a youth center. And I'm thinking that that's one thing, there could be special room with the rotating collection for, according to their demands, and not things that are just for teenagers, but their choice. So I'm hoping a philanthropist will show up someplace and take advantage of one of the empty buildings downtown and start a teen center. I, I once spoke, in one week, I spoke to a government class at South Eugene and, and a class at the Opportunity Center, very different kinds of kids. And in both cases, I asked if they would like a teen, youth center downtown, and they started drawing up plans for it immediately. And a part of it would be books, some part would be counselors, some part would be a music place, and so forth. Another question, you think that we'll ever have the bookmobile again?
It was before we were.
Hi. Yeah. No, I, I'm actually the one that pulled the plug on the bookmobile, I'm sorry to say. It's, it's, it's an interesting question. I think that environmentally speaking, they're not the most efficient service, and if there's a way to do a deposit collection or some kind of dispensary in many locations, that actually ends up serving the community's needs better. But it's certainly something that you put in the mix when you look at all the different options. I've also seen, not so much bookmobiles in a traditional sense where you get on and there's actually shelves, but something where it brings carts of books to like a nursing home or something like that. So there's different models out there that we could look at.
I know many people really miss the bookmobiles, which used to go to grocery parking lots. Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you. Well, thanks for the presentation. I really appreciate the outreach and the report. I really like the visions that were articulated in there. And in particular, I think the vision of having all Eugene children prepared when they enter kindergarten is a really great, clear goal that, you know, can inform strategies and, and partnerships. So those are great. On the teen question, I was wondering, since it might be a little while before the fourth floor is available, if, you know, if there was any space in the atrium building that might be purposed to some of those uses, because that is a city-owned building and it's just kitty corner to the library. So that might be something to look into. I was curious in your outreach, because I, too, have this idea of instead of just looking at how we get back what we lost, if we can really think visionary of what we might add, add more value to, add back what we lost and add more if we had the resources. Did you get any feedback from folks in the community about wanting or desire in branch libraries in parts of the community that don't have one right now?
Yes, I would say that was one of the most frequent requests.
So I think that's important for us to, to hear and, and take into consideration. I know we're, we've cut our hours and we're in this, you know, belt-tightening mode, but I think as we think about our vision for what we'd like to see, I think that should be part of the conversation as well. I think council was right in keeping the promise of ending the library levy, but I think unfortunately the timing could not have been worse. It was right as the recession hit, which wasn't really able for us as a council or budget committee to have recognized that we were in that, on that precipice. So again, I agree with the mayor that this isn't just a conversation about how we fill in the holes and get back what we lost, but really create a vision for what is possible. And I would be interested in, in looking further into the idea of a library levy and maybe at the workshop, as the city manager has suggested, because I would also want to see how that might interact with some of the other potential revenue pieces we're discussing, and what impacts things might have on each other, because then we can't just be going out all over the place asking people to pass levies on various things. We, we need to be thoughtful about that. But I do recognize that our community wants us to fund our library services, bring back our branch library hours, keep our collection robust and modern, and so we do have an obligation to look at the ways that we can do that.
Mike?
I'm going to vote in favor of moving this along and coming back to us with this kind of information, not necessarily because I would automatically support a library levy. I don't know, based on a future conversation, if that's the wisest thing to do, or at this time, or not. But I think it will help us, help inform us of the larger conversation we need to have around some of our other priorities with regard to parks, with regard to roads, with regard to some of the other bigger questions. We need to have all of the options on the table, and knowing what would come of and what might be produced by a library levy is an important part of that information, I think. So I'll support gathering that, certainly.
So before we get, put a motion on the table, I just wanted to add that I think this maker space is very interesting in a lot of ways, very timely. It's very timely in a conversation about teens, because they're very interested in innovation and, and things of that sort, and we're headed down that road. I'm, I saw when I was on one of my, on my trip to Louisville over innovative cities, mobile units that had 3D printers and things like that, and it would be taken out to different parts of the community for people to easily access, and it wouldn't be just for the, the people that would ordinarily necessarily think about going to the library. It would be for, for folks who just wanted to have that opportunity to use materials they'd never get to use in another, in another way. So just something to, to think about, that, that sort of idea of maker space in a library, but maker space moving out of the library is probably a very timely thing for us to be. And I would think in that regard, partnerships that you might really think about would, would lead to business partnerships, partnerships with companies and things of that sort. That would be sort of another, another kind of partnership that we could add to how we put all these things together for, for people. So that would, that might be worth doing some noodling about, too. I, I just think there's, there's something really good there, and I'm willing to bet that almost every business in its community values our library considerably and could see ways that they, that you, we could contribute to each other. So it'd be an interesting thing to explore, I think, and I'd be very interested in myself. So Chris, you want to put the motion on the table?
Yes. I move to request the city manager to develop funding options for city council's FY-16 consideration to invest in the Eugene Public Library of the future and to sustainably operate the services.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Thank you. Any closing comments or anything? Anybody who needs, wants to make? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.